And welcome to the October 22nd meeting of the Board of Selectmen. We're first going to start up by going into executive session. So a motion would be needed to go into executive session in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, subsection 21A3, to be ready upon matters which have gone in open meeting could detriment to affect the position of the town regarding strategy with respect to litigation. Would come out of executive session reconvening in open meetings. Do I have a motion?
I'll just move that motion that you just read. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Oh, the editor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, we have to take a roll call for that.
Roll call for that. Ms. Ruffey?
Yes.
Yes.
And then the chair, vice chair.
Welcome back into the what day is today? November 22nd, thank you, meeting of the Auburn Board of Selectmen. Coming back from executive session. We have a joint meeting scheduled for seven, and I have 6:50 right now, so I'm going to ask us to take Agenda Item 9C out of order, the Notice on Solid Waste and Recycling Fee Change.
So move.
Most of them made in seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Both unanimous?
Just a half. Yeah, we can do that. And also the asking them.
The reporting.
Yeah.
Yeah. I was going to skip the pledge since we had...
I didn't know if you didn't know Scott did that or not.
Yeah. All right. Is anyone in the audience recording this meeting?
No.
Seeing none, I'll just say that this meeting is being recorded both up here and for YouTube and livestreams for the public record, because we now stand as opposed.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States and the Constitution, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, and omnipotent.
I should have checked, I thought Darlene would be here. Is there anyone reporting on the fee change for the solid waste recycling fee?
Yes.
Can you come up to the mic, please? Oh, no, you can come up to the table with us. I'm sorry, without glasses and with the masks, I can't tell who anyone is. I was looking in the office for Darlene and didn't see her. It was...
Yeah, Darlene is out, and she said this was going to be on the agenda. So I think the question this morning for the fees were how they rolled it out to the community. And so Darlene has spent a lot of time on the releases for it. She did it via Facebook, she did it on our town website, she did it LCAC. We didn't do a direct mailer because the bills will be going out at the beginning of December, so she was going to put a message on there about it. I don't know if you wanted a mailer to go out to everyone, but that's how we sent it out, that's how we did it the last time we changed the fees.
Board members have questions, comments? I would ask, the last time you did it, you said there was a mailer or was...
There was not.
There was not a mailer.
We did not send a mailer. We did it this exact same way. These fees actually added new products, so we did want to, when we were sending out the bills, after the bills go out, if any multi's want to go down to small, they'll have a window of opportunity to do that, so we'll send some messaging out at that point that there's a new product that wasn't previously offered for the multi community.
One thing that we had, was mentioned at the last meeting when we talked about fees, but none of us really asked about, is I saw that there were exemptions for some residents that they might qualify for exemption. Could you just talk about that a little bit?
That's a senior exemption. They actually apply through the assessor's office, and they have some guidelines they need to meet, there's an income guideline, and they reapply every year to make sure that they still need it, and they get 50% off of their utility for the trash.
The window that people have to switch over their toders, that's still going to be the $25 fee, right, to switch out?
So the $25 fee actually comes from Casella. That's their fee to go pick up the old toders and bring the new toders.
Okay.
So there's no toder fee, it's a delivery fee and a pickup fee.
Okay.
So if they're getting, if they already have a 96 recycle and they're just going to change their trash toder, we will keep that, there would just be one $25 fee.
Fantastic. All right, thank you. If there's nothing else from board members? All right, great, thank you.
Thank you.
There's only four minutes. Yep. I have a motion move Agenda Item 8D. It's 8D.
So move.
Most have been made in seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. We have gift acceptances, the amount of $50 to the Fire Rescue Department.
Motion to accept the gratitude.
Second.
And Dan Sacco, motion's been made in seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. And then, I'm just going to use a roll call to slow it down. We have $150 to the Police Department in donation in memory of retired police officer Ballon Thrum.
Motion to accept the gratitude.
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded by a roll call vote, Mrs. Ruffey?
Yes.
Mr. Bertheum?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Ren?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. It's unanimous.
I'm with the little one.
All right, is there a motion move up Agenda Item 8C?
Motion move, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. All right, members have liquor license renewals in their packet. This is just to renew for the following year. Let's pull them up here.
Make a motion to accept. Motion to approve the license renewals, provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said licenses are subject to all the conditions stated upon them. Failure to comply with any and all of the conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void, and with the conditions of the DCG to be on the licenses.
Second.
Motion's been made by Mr. Bertheum, seconded by Mr. Carpenter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. We've opened Agenda Item... Ah, that'll take another minute. We've moved up Agenda Item 8B.
So move.
Motion's been made in seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Agenda Item 8B is designation of town employees as special municipal employees for the purpose of snow plowing. So board members have enclosed, the vote taken.
Make a motion that the designated employees, we don't need to read names, right?
I don't think so, shouldn't.
The designated employees stated in the letter of section 8B here. Be designated as town employees, special municipal employees for the purpose of snow plowing for the winter of 2021, 2022.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Mr. Bertheum, seconded by Mr. Ren, by roll call vote, Mrs. Ruffey?
Yes.
Mr. Bertheum?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Ren?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Yeah, just pull your thumbs for 40 seconds. Hello. Actually, that's a good idea. I have a motion move up Agenda Item 12.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. We have the minutes from October 12th, 2021, town meeting, excuse me, Board of Selectmen meeting. Are there any corrections or omissions? Seeing none, all except those read. And with that, all right, 7 o'clock. So we have a joint meeting with the Board of Library Trustees, interview with candidates.
I'm going to let you know you're ready for it.
Thank you.
I'm not sure if Jen's coming.
Okay. Let's read the script. Good evening, I now call the November 22nd, 2021, Joint Meeting of the Auburn Board of Selectmen and the Library Board of Trustees to order. I'll now ask the Chair of the Library Board of Trustees to call your joint meeting to order as well.
As the Chair of the Library Board of Trustees, I call this meeting to order. I'm going to call on members of our committee. If you're present, please acknowledge Matthew Toth.
Present.
Erica Breen Sacker, did I get it?
Yes, you did, President.
So sorry.
Sure you did.
Still learning.
I'm going to pay attention to when you call her name.
Yes, yes. I've only said it out loud about three times and I got it right. Suzette informed us that she's not going to be here tonight, and Jennifer Lee is not here.
Okay, is that a quorum?
No. No, so we could interview, but we can't vote.
Okay, okay. All right. Tonight's joint meeting has one item, Agenda item, the interview of candidates for vacancy of the Library Board of Trustees and vote to appoint the candidates. Since there's no quorum for the Library Board of Trustees, we won't vote to appoint tonight. And this is to fill the vacancy until May 17th, 2021, the annual town election. For members of the public who may be watching, Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 11, dictates the process that must be followed regarding the appointment to fill vacancy in town office. Under this statute, if there is a vacancy, the board consisting of two or more members, except a board whose members have been elected by proportional representation under Chapter 54A, the selectman, who with the remaining members or members of such board, shall, after one week's notice, fill such vacancy by roll call vote. Majority of the votes of the offices entitled to the vote shall be necessary to appoint. Person appointed shall be registered voter of the town of Auburn and shall perform the duties of the office until the next annual meeting, which is May 17th, 2022. With that, I will invite the three candidates to come up, or you can do all you want, see...
The first one, I apologize in advance if I don't pronounce this correctly, John F. Danilowicz.
Yeah, hi, I'm on the phone, yeah, I'm on the phone.
Great, thank you. Did I pronounce your name correctly?
Close enough.
Close enough.
All right, with that, I'll turn it over to the Library Board to ask the questions.
I'm going to start with you, Matt.
I don't know, because you haven't been living in town as long as some of the others, are you familiar at all with the Auburn Public Library? And if you are, what can you tell me about it?
Sure, so I actually grew up in Worcester, and 32 years ago, married my wife, who was a lifetime Auburn resident, whose mother was on the Board of Health. And as I lived overseas, my family and I would come back to Auburn regularly, and our kids at different times attended Auburn Public Schools and were users of the library. I've been back, we've been living in town since 2015, and we have been overseas for most of that, or for much of that time, but we've used the library both in person and then used some of the virtual services. Over.
Thank you. How do you see the value of libraries as we move into this very digital world?
Sure, so I think there's a few roles that libraries play. Again, you know, remembering growing up and seeing my kids grow up, you know, I think the value of a library to still that lifelong love of reading is as important today as it's ever been. I think similarly, and maybe even to a greater extent than previously, the library as a community space is important. We have lots of virtual spaces in which we meet, but I think it's still important that we have physical spaces. So again, in Auburn, and in many towns, the library becomes that place for the community to meet. But then, you know, I think there are exciting opportunities for libraries to take advantage of technology. Again, as I mentioned, I've been an avid user of the virtual holdings of the library through the CW Mars Partnership, Overdrive, Libby, et cetera. And I think, you know, as in my experience overseas, representing our government, you know, we have information centers around the world, and we've had to think in similar ways of how do we move from the physical brick and mortar library or American Center to a more virtual environment. And I think, again, the COVID pandemic showed us that there's a lot more utility, I think, than we had been using before, but I think there still needs to be a balance between the virtual and the real world. Over.
Thank you.
Okay. What would you like to accomplish as a member of the Board of Trustees for the library?
Sure, so, you know, as I mentioned, you know, I've spent, you know, more than the last three decades, you know, representing our country abroad. And through that, I've gotten to know a lot about the countries in which we serve, the people, et cetera. We've come back to the US time and again, but now that that chapter of our lives is ending, you know, we're looking to fully engage in our community. So, you know, part of this, and part of my interest in serving on the Board, is to give something back to our community, but at the same time, to allow me to get to know others in the community and to be somebody who's participating in an active way in town government. So I see this as an opportunity for me to share the skills and experiences I've learned, but also for me to, through this, learn more about town government and to learn more about our town and its residents. Over.
Well, this is Mary DeCoursey, I'm the Chairperson of the Library Board of Trustees. First of all, thank you for your service, I read your resume, I really appreciate it. Can you talk about efforts to promote diversity, equity, and inclusion when bringing the community together around issues related to the library?
Sure, thanks for that. And again, you know, diversity, equity, inclusion has been something all of us have been thinking about, not just in recent years, but in recent years in particular. So, you know, one of the things that I was charged with doing when I was leading one of our diplomatic missions overseas, was to look at how we could strengthen our own diversity, equity, and inclusion programs. One of the things that, you know, I believe strongly in is that diversity comes in many shapes and sizes. So again, if we think about the library, there's a diversity in terms of the age groups who use the library, whether, and again, I think this is reflected well in the strategic plan, whether it be from new readers and young learners, to what do we do for our teens and other school-aged children, to how do we engage adults in the community and then our senior citizens. Again, people come from a variety of different socioeconomic backgrounds, you know, digital access is exciting, if you have the tools, you have the training, et cetera. So I think, again, while in many ways Auburn may not appear to be the most diverse community, I think if we step back and we think, we can see we have a lot of diversity in our town. And I think, you know, working in partnership with the town administration, working with those professionals who run the library, I think the Board has an important role to play in helping to bridge between the community and the town government, and to think creatively about how we can make sure that the library is available for all. And again, you know, speaking as somebody who's used the library, I very much have appreciated in the past that, you know, whether it was my kids going there, or, you know, elementary students, or me as an adult serving overseas, the library was able to meet us and our diverse needs. So again, my interest is in giving back and sharing some of my experiences and what I've learned over the years. Over.
Great, thank you.
John, you mentioned strategic plan, you've taken a look at that?
Yeah, you know, I have. And again, one of the things I've had some experience with is strategic planning, and in a couple ways. I mean, again, each year, you know, each diplomatic mission has a responsibility to come up with a strategic plan, you know, to guide our engagement in that country. So again, I've been involved from being the one writing the plans, being the one overseeing the production. I also served several years on international school boards overseas, both as a member and as a chair, and having gone through strategic planning processes with schools, I'm very familiar with strategic plans. Again, I see their values, I see some of the limitations. And again, I think for me, the strategic plan is very useful in helping, you know, again, the different components of the community, whether it be the Board, the town administration, those who run the library, the community, and the friends of the library, each to understand their various, you know, roles and responsibilities, and how we can work together toward that common goal. Over.
Thank you, John.
Anything else?
Do board members have any questions? Mrs. Carpenter?
Thank you, Mr. Danilowicz. I'd like to join Chairperson DeCoursey in thanking you for your service, that was quite the resume that I reviewed. My question to you would be, not that I expect you to be, you know, well-versed in this matter at this point in time, but as a member of the Library Board of Trustees, would you commit to abiding by all the rules of Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, as it relates to open meeting laws, and deliberating with your other Board of Trustees members outside of public meeting? Would you be abiding by the open meeting law and seeking to not deliberate inappropriately?
Thanks for the question. And, you know, I had the opportunity, as I was preparing for this and thinking about, you know, my potential service on the Board, to watch videos on YouTube of several past Board meetings. And while it didn't get into the detail, I got a sense from that of some of the issues and concerns that have arisen. I'll be honest, I'm not an expert in Mass's open meeting laws, but I recognize that that's an important thing for me, should I be asked to serve on the Board, an important thing for me to understand. I think what I would do, though, is step back. One of the things that was very beneficial for me when I served on the school board was to understand the bylaws, to understand the legal environment in which we worked, what were the to-do cherry and other responsibilities of the Board. And again, understanding, you know, the role and responsibility of the Board, again, versus, you know, those who are administrators, you know, running the organization. I have friends who have served in town, or, you know, municipal or state government, so I, you know, again, I'm generally familiar with those laws, but, you know, you can certainly have my commitment that I will do everything I can to abide by all the laws, as I've done throughout my, you know, three decades plus as a, you know, government servant, but also beyond that, you know, my 52 years as a citizen of our United States. Over.
Thank you, John. And just as a follow-up, would you commit to, Town Council will be offering this coming year, open meeting training for all of town boards, would you be open to such training?
Not only would I be open to it, I would welcome it. And again, I think a best practice for any Board member in any Board in any organization is to go through some Board training. You know, recognizing that there are different types of Boards, I think the Board itself needs to have a shared understanding of what the guidelines are. And, you know, again, I think in a case like this, you know, as citizens, you know, we have an important role to play, but I think we also need to recognize where we don't have expertise, and frankly, it would be a professional development opportunity for me to become more familiar with those laws and regulations. Over.
Excellent, thank you, John.
Mr. Carpenter?
I have to say, the last two rounds have been, we've been embarrassed by the riches of the people who want to serve on the committee, so that is a great problem to have. So thank you for putting yourself forward after so many years of putting yourself forward in some rather unpleasant parts of the globe, at least if we can believe the evening is. My big issue or question is about advocacy. You said that you looked at the strategic plan, so how would you, as a Board member, view your role as an advocate for the community, and how would you bring voices outside of the library into the library so that they're included in decision-making and the like?
Yeah, great, thanks for that question. Again, this is a tricky one, and, you know, again, in the number of areas in my professional career, I've had these dilemmas. So for example, you know, again, when I was on a school board, parents would come to me with complaints about the administration, or their child's grade, or something that the principal was doing. You know, in many cases, I had to step back and say, you know, this is something you need to take up directly with the administration. However, on other issues, like for example tuition, I mean, tuition was a matter that was within the confidence of the Board, so it was important for me to understand, you know, what the community was thinking. Similarly, you know, it was our job to hire and fire the superintendent and to evaluate his or her performance, so at the time that we were doing that evaluation, we sought input from the community. So again, I think this goes back to the question of training. Once you understand what your role and responsibility is, then it's easy, I think, to field those questions. And then just as another example from my professional life, you know, one of the things we do overseas is the State Department, is we adjudicate visas for people coming to the United States. Those visa decisions are made by Consular Officers by law. So if I was in a senior leadership position at the Embassy, somebody might come to me with a question about a visa. Not only would I be not doing what I should if I were to intervene, I would potentially find myself in legal jeopardy because I might be violating a law. So again, I think being, you know, well-informed is being well-armed. So to the extent to which it's within the Board's purview to advocate, I would certainly want to do all I could to fill that role. But I'm also somebody who, when I see something I'm being asked to do, which I don't believe is within my confidence, I'm happy to point the person in the direction of the person who, or the institution that's best able to, you know, respond to their needs. Over.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from board members? So I only have the one question that I ask every candidate that comes before the Board, and it's usually on the application, and it is on yours, that you put, that you would be willing to consider or be considered for another Board or Commission if needed. So I just wanted to ask if there are any other Boards or Commissions that you've looked at or have any interest in specifically, or if this is just, you know, in general, but if you've given any other thoughts, any other Boards or Commissions that you might want to serve on?
Sure, thanks for that. So I am, you know, formally retiring from the State Department, you know, this week, and at that point then I am able to, you know, play a more active political role than I've been able to do in the past because of restrictions on political activity by US government employees. So one of my interests, as I kind of open this next chapter, as I said, was getting more involved in town government. So, you know, I've thought about, even though this isn't a Board position, I've thought about potentially standing for a town meeting member position as a way of getting involved in town government. And to be honest, I don't know if there's a potential conflict there, so that would be something I'd need to get guidance on. But I looked at the Boards that there were vacancies for and for which the town was seeking volunteers. The two of those that was available, the two that left out to me, were the Library Board and the Planning Board. Again, given, I think, the importance of both of these. And I think the library is such an important kind of cornerstone of the community, that went left out to me. And then, you know, again, the Planning Board was another one, but like I said, my interest at this point primarily is to give something back to the community, to engage further and to know more. So I'm certainly open to, you know, the other Boards that I indicated, or frankly, if there are other openings for which my skills and experience might be a good fit, I'm open to the adjustments. And I appreciate that there's a lot of talent in the community, and certainly I respect the prerogative of both Boards. If there's somebody who's a better fit for the Library Board, it's certainly not going to dissuade me from stepping forward in the future. Over.
Fantastic, thank you. I'm glad to hear that you're going to be resilient and volunteer no matter what, because we will always be happy to take more volunteers. we will always be happy to take more volunteers on our boards and commissions, so thank you. If there are no other questions from any board members from either board, then we can move on to the next candidate. Who I have as...
Deborah Mashara.
Deborah Mashara. Thank you. So now I won't mention last names. Do you know she was with five? Okay, if that's the case, we have Keith Vezio. I don't know if I'm pronouncing that name right. Is Keith on the call or in the room? I think at our last meeting, the last time we went through this, we had one candidate leave the building at the time, we had two. So given that, and we can't take a vote tonight anyway, I would say that that would conclude the agenda item for our joint meeting. And we can work out whether or not we're going to interview the other two candidates when we hear back from them, or if we just have the one. So with that, I'll say thank you to John. We don't have two other candidates right now if you're still on the call. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the, adjourn the meeting. Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded by a roll call vote. Mr. Roughly? Mr. Burthing?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Run?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Mr. Toth?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry.
It happens.
Free soccer?
Free soccer, close enough.
Free soccer, huh?
Yeah.
I already forgot.
She's in the sport.
And Chair DeCristis?
Yes.
I'm here, adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Chairman, I make a motion to take a brief recess just so the Library Trustees can...
Seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
opposed, it's unanimous, we're in a brief recess.
This conference will now be recorded.
All right, welcome back. Moving on to our regular agenda, I'm going to ask that we move up Agenda Item 8A.
Don't move.
Second.
Okay, that's where we're on.
Second and...
Okay, I think that's where we actually... That's where we are.
Oh. Oh, you're right. In that case, public comments, we have none, public hearings or presentations, we have none, communications, we have none. All right, 8A, we have a plastic bag extension request from Arcade Industries, 205 Southbridge Street. Do you have a... Sure. Oh, sure, do you want to join us up here?
Through the chair, or to the chair. Are we voting on each request of this plastic bag, or is this a discussion?
We'll be voting to approve the request.
And each time a company has one, we'll be approving?
Yeah, from what we voted on our last meeting, except the...
Yeah, I knew they were gonna allow the request, I didn't know we were voting on it, if they do want.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So would you like to just explain why you're here and what the... Oh, I'm sorry, can you please say your name and address for the record first?
Coffee. This is Anita Yefir. And we're just trying to get an extension on the use of these bags. We got a little caught up with the bag usage in our place and it's taken so long to get them. We placed an order in June for 10,000 bags. The, that I saw, the application came, I mean, the letter came across my desk and I tried to cancel it, which was, I couldn't do. We had some inventory already, we had excess inventory because of the year that we just went through, retail sales or the retail store was way off. And with the overship that we have about 18,000 bags that I would like to use, or somewhat get some kind of an extension on it. The Board of Health has asked us to look into a different, their applications of what we can use. On buying a four-mill bag and at the time, it, you know, by the time we get the plates and the cost is going to be around 52 cents a bag, I'm not going to charge our customers for a bag. So I don't think resin's going to come down anytime soon, so I'd probably opt out to using a paper bag. I would always like to have my logo on the bag, so it could be taken out of there, you know, for advertisements, but you have to, you have to order hundreds of thousands of bags. So we're just probably going to go, if we can use some of these up, we're going to go to a paper bag. The option's still on the table, I'm going to a four-mill bag, but it's just, it's a different bag. We now have a t-shirt bag, I don't know if anyone's seen it, it's a pretty durable bag. And I'm just here to ask if we can, you know, get an extension on using some of our bags in our store. It has been very busy, sales are up, the store sales are up, so I think we would go through a decent amount of them, but of course, it's a few folks to see.
Sure. Do board members have questions or comments? Mr. Carpenter?
The quick questions are usually, Chairman, how long do you think it would take you to get through these bags? Is three months enough, or is there additional, do you need additional time? Because to me, I don't want to set you up to fail. And on top of the fact, it sounds or looks like, from what you presented, that you were trying to be in compliance with the bylaw. So I wouldn't want you to, you know, have to order now new bags or more expensive bags when you have adequate bags. That's how long it takes.
You know what, a year supply at a time. Like that's, because there's such, there's a minimum order. So there's a minimum order of 10,000 bags, which lasts us, I'd say, a year, right?
Yeah. We've run out a couple times, that's why I was trying to stay ahead of it, you know? And running out of it, I mean, you have to buy a regular bag, it's really thin, it rips our plastic container that goes in your other containers, the bags that we have, decorative bags are tins. So, but yeah. I mean, Christmas, Valentine's is right around the corner, and then, I mean, I actually asked if we could go to Easter to see what we could get and use up. I don't know how long it's, but we usually, generally order a year supply. And they did an overrun, so there's, you know... And I did try to cancel it, arguing back and forth, but, you know, I don't think, we just received the bags that we...
They're on in October, yeah. We received their shipment that we ordered in June, we received in October, and there wasn't an extra thousand bags overrun, which you have to take, it's just part of ordering the bags. So yeah, I guess ideally, I mean, we'd love to use up all the bags, but we understand the policy of the town, so our second best would be at least through Easter. That would give us the holidays, you know, the major holidays. But honestly, like any leniency that the town can give us would be appreciated, appreciated.
Chairman, I just follow-up to you, to the town manager. Is there anything in what we voted that would prevent us from, I know you're requesting three months, it's not like it's a public hearing. So is there anything that would prevent us from issuing an extension greater than what they asked for?
I believe the policy that we voted on in the last meeting set guidelines to one month, two month, and three month. So if we wanted to change that, I think we would need a separate vote on the policy, but I'm not...
Thank you, for the chair, I don't have, I don't have that with me, but I agree, if you voted it last week, proposing the extensions, what you could do is vote one now, and maybe what you could do is take a condition, a vote conditional if they need another extension, vote that extension which may as well, so you would actually have two extensions, and then you're still within the policy.
Yeah, I thought we had a six-month, I thought we had a six-month option.
I'm through the chair, I'm looking over at our cable DDIS employees to see if that was a recommendation. I don't believe it.
I don't think it was. I think the six months that you might be thinking of is when it was originally proposed as a bylaw, I had had a six-month extension put in there, but I don't think that was adopted in the final policy. And then the one that we, we adopted the last meeting was one month, two month, three month. So I, I think the town manager is right, we can adopt three months and then see where they're at, and potentially apply again for another three months. Again, we might have to check policy and allow for the two extensions, or two applications. Mr. Carpenter?
I would, I would agree with that. I think we should definitely go the maximum three months. I, I think it's, you guys have done a great job in town. Thank you for being in Auburn, and I enjoy going into the store, I don't get them to opt in.
Thank you.
I'd like to, but I think that you did a really good job explaining what your dilemma is. I think that, you know, a company that gives invoices, you know, purchase orders invoices, stating, you know, when they ordered, when they received, and that type of thing, you know, I, I think we should do everything we can to, to get you to use up the bags that you have, knowing that you're cooperating with the town to, to get to the eventual plastic bag bylaw. So I think that we should definitely just go for the max three months and then, you know, I don't think they have to come back every three months, but they can certainly reapply three months from now and, or do we need to do a double extension tonight? Do we do one and then just let them kind of send us a, an update in three months and we'll just vote again to extend?
You could do that, I mean, you have two options. You could vote tonight to extend for the maximum amount now, and then take a vote that you will be willing to extend one more time based on a request from the applicant, or you could just have the applicant send a letter, and you could vote it next time and not require them to come in.
I, I think, you know, if, if they're, you know, they're sitting on 18,000 bags and if we're saying that that's going to take a year for them to use up, you know, we're, I think that it would be wrong for us not to try to let them have that entire year. So I don't think we should say one more extension, I think we should just say that, you know, we'll entertain application for extension each time. I mean, what I would like to see, you know, when you do come back, is to, to say, you know, okay, we've gone through, you know, three thousand in this, you know, in this quarter, or, you know, hopefully the Christmas season's going to be good for you, so you'll have a big quarter this time. You know, just keep us updated as to how many are getting used, doesn't have to be down to the absolute, but just so that we can make educated decisions.
Absolutely.
Any other, Mr. Carpenter?
Yeah, I, the other part of this is, I don't think the board should be asking business owners to come to the meeting for us to vote us. This, to me, is a staff issue, that they should be able to go to the staff. If there's something that doesn't fall within the policy, then we can be the hearings officer or whatever you want to call us. But, I mean, to me, I, like, that was not my understanding of the policy, that they were going to come here and take time out of their life to sit here and, for something that, to me, is something the staff, we delegated all of this to the Board of Health. So to me, the fact that we're even in this conversation is kind of weird, but I went with it last week, so I would just ask that we put the policy on the agenda. I will not be here at the next meeting, I apologize, but I think we should amend it so that this is something that staff can handle, so that the business owners can, you know, do something in a reasonable amount of time and not have to, I think we don't like seeing this, it's just, I'm sure with the holiday season starting, you probably should do. So I would make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we issue a three-month extension with a request that another three-month extension be given to them conditionally at this time. They can certainly update the Board of Health, and we can certainly be copied on that if they need, you know, anything beyond six months, let's say, at this point.
I'll second that. And this is the minute seconded, I just want to ask clarification on putting the policy on the agenda for next week, so...
Let's move it, well, before two.
I'm sorry, next meeting, yeah, you said next meeting, I was thinking next week. In not having businesses come in, you're just suggesting that the representatives wouldn't come into the meeting, but that we would still be voting whether or not to grant?
No, the staff should be able to handle that, that's, that's, they're in and out of these establishments all the time. We have delegated to the Board of Health, they wrote the policy, I believe the town meeting warrants that they were developing the policies to implement this. So to me, it's, you know, not something that we need to see somebody, they're not asking for a license, they're not opening a new business, their existing business, due to, you know, a fairly crappy time that we've all experienced, got stuck with a bunch of bags that need to be gone, and the best way to get them gone is to, you know, I hear from people all the time, just in that, we should have these bags. I use these bags all the time, so this, this would help someone if they go to Arcade.
There's the advertisement, you need these bags to go to Arcade.
Through the chair, Mr. Carpenter. And I, well, let me just ask the question. Would you feel the same, I mean, I just want to make sure you're not thinking in a presupposition that everyone would be like Arcade and is transparent and willing to comply with the law? I mean, this is all there, no brain at all. Would you want the, would you want the Board of Health to have the same authority to say no?
Yes.
Without our older side? Okay, I agree, I just wanted to make sure.
Because the policy is, is requiring the supporting documentation, so if they say no, then the Board of Health says, you're not giving me what I need to give you what you want, then no. They should be, they should be saying, if you don't want to comply, then I can't help you at this particular moment in time. But thankfully, we don't have that problem before us tonight.
Yep. I agree, Mr. Carpenter.
Is there anything else we do with the motion that has been seconded? Mr. Burthing?
Just, just for discussion, if, if the, let's say, the Board or the Commission decide to reject an application like this, can they then come to the selectment for an overrule? That's, that would be the question.
Well, under right, right now, the policy as a standard, they come before us in general, but I think at our next meeting, we can talk about how we would have it set up, and if they want to appeal, then I guess it would come before us and we can write something like that into the policy, I'm sure.
Okay, yeah, because I just, you know, there should always be an appeal process.
So in that case, we would just be...
Thank you.
All right, nothing else?
Thank you very much.
Seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? All right, unanimous, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a nice Thanksgiving session. Come on down, see us.
Thank you. See you tomorrow.
All right, I can have a motion move up Agenda Item 9B. Still move? Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? It's unanimous. And the vote to approve the allegation letter issuing authority to the local cable committee, delegating the holding of the cable ascertainment hearing to the committee.
It's for the chair, thank you, thank you for taking this out of the way. I want to acknowledge and recognize Bill Shibor, do you mind if Bill came up to the table? Bill Shibor has been a long-serving chairman of the local cable committee, does a fantastic job, so... job, so thank you for coming and waiting, so Bill and I can kind of check to you this, and if there are any questions, you can certainly ask Bill, but the basic gist of it is, as you know, through the cable process, we have a ten-year license currently with Charter slash Spectrum, it was Charter at the time, and part of that process is to start an ascertainment process, and it's all regulated by the FCC, so you have to follow the schedule for ascertainment hearings and the ascertainment process, so the last time this was done was prior to the contract being signed in 2013, so it probably would have been undertaken right around eleven to twelve, in anticipation of the contract being signed in thirteen, and at that time, the Board of Selectmen had authorized the local Cable Committee to hold the hearings on their behalf, you as the Board of Selectmen are the licensing authority, so what happened last time the Cable Committee held the ascertainment hearing, I believe Bill was there one at the time?
There were two.
There were two hearings, and they prepared a memo and a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen recommending Charter, who at the time, again, was the only, only provider.
I, I can't hear, every time somebody goes out and they talk, I think at some point we need to close that wall in, it seems like every time somebody leaves, we can't hear anything. I'm sorry, Julia, I couldn't hear a word.
All right, so, so basically, let me do this if you're okay, because it's hard to hear me too, so you like, all right, here we go, so ascertainment process is acquired by the FCC prior to a municipality entering into a Charter, into a contract with a cable television service provider, so the last contract we had was signed in 2013, and the ascertainment process probably would have started about, I believe it has to start two years prior to the contract, there are certain dates that you have to follow, so the Cable Committee started actually notifying Charter under the FCC regulations approximately last December, I believe, he took a vote to notify Charter that it was time to start to enter into the ascertainment process, so when this was done ten years ago, the Board of Selectmen as the issuing authority of the license, so you will be the one that finally approves the license, you had delegated the authority to hold the meetings to the local Charter Committee, the local Charter Committee held two public hearings, gathered the information, and came back to the Board with their recommendation for the ten-year contract with Charter, so this letter before you tonight was drafted by our cable television attorney, who we contracted with during the ascertainment process, Bill August, and he's been with the town, I'm going to say.
It's the third contract I've dealt with him.
So, so thirty years he's been, he's been doing this, he is the guru for cable television legal contracts, and his advice was for the Board to take a vote to formally designate the local Cable Advisory Committee to hold the hearings on their behalf, then this gets filed with the state, so when the state and the FCC check and make sure everything was followed, they will see that the hearings were held in accordance with the law, and that the Board delegated the authority to hold the hearings to the local cable, the other option is, the Board doesn't have to delegate it, you could hold these hearings on your own, and then make a decision based on the information that you get, but I was following the process that had been followed for the last two contracts, which would be to delegate it to the local Cable Committee, if that is the case, the date that we were looking at, we had narrowed it down to two, January eighteenth or January thirty-first, at six p.m., I think we were just waiting to hear back from all the members of the local Cable Committee to see when they were available to hold this hearing, and then, I'm assuming, we would probably schedule a second hearing, but we were just focusing right now on getting the first one underway, and then I think a couple months go by and you.
Yeah, that's a good one, I have the timetable from the last time, so.
Thank you, and then I should just mention, and Chris Hugo gets these questions all the time, I think he had one last week, so these cable television licenses are not exclusive licenses under the law, any cable TV provider can come before the town and enter into negotiations and come up with a contract with the town, so just because we have a contract with Spectrum doesn't mean you can't have a contract with another provider, the issue has been that there are no other providers, no other providers right now have the infrastructure in place to provide cable television services to the community, so until that happens, we are likely not going to get another cable TV provider, it is up to the cable TV providers to invest in the infrastructure that's needed to provide the services, so the ascertainment process is one in which the local Cable Committee residents come in, if they have questions about, about Charter, about Spectrum, about what the services are, about what the town does, it's all done through the ascertainment process, and the frustrating part for all of us is that some residents do come in and they want another provider, and we're willing to enter into a contract with another provider, if there is one, and at the moment, and there has not been for several years, the other issue that we hear a lot, again, Chris Hugo, I will say, I think you heard one last week, we hear from some residents complaints about the cost of the services going up, and under the FCC, the issuing authority and municipality have no, no regulatory authority over the rate setting of these, of these cable TV providers, so as frustrating as it is, and everyone can empathize that prices are going up everywhere and costs are going up, the town cannot, cannot get involved in the setting of the rates under the federal law, so that's.
Were you finished with?
Yes.
Through the chair, to the, to committee member, what can be done, do you folks often talk together about what can be done to try to promote other providers to come into the area, or, I mean, it just seems, in today's day and age, that it's so crazy that we're stuck with one here.
Oh, it comes to the infrastructure, I mean, to wire a town, you've got to, you've got to get a license with Verizon, a national grid to get on your poles, and I think we have somewhere around five thousand telephone poles in the town, so, you know, we did have two contracts ago, RCN was, expressed interest in coming in, and then they backed out to last minute, the only one out there that could possibly come to town would be Fios, but they're only focusing on the city of Boston right now, and they're not expanding anywhere.
Because it seems to me like with cell towers, they, they share each other's towers, they share, they share each other's network.
The smaller ones do, but the big three don't share.
The big three don't share at all?
It's all the little cell companies that will share the towers, but.
So you don't see anything really coming down the line?
Well, you know, you've got your satellites coming out, you know, Starlink there with Elon Musk, you know, who knows what's going to be coming off of those in the next couple of years, and we'll be getting directly off of there, who knows?
Okay, and, and as a follow-up, so when is our actual, it's a ten-year contract, when is that date up, did you say?
Expires June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Twenty twenty-three, okay, so twenty twenty-three, so we're just being greatly proactive, which is awesome.
It's usually an eighteen to thirty-six month process.
Quite a process, sure, okay, June twenty twenty-three, and, and through the chair, to the town manager, so what, if I heard you right, even if we give them a ten-year contract, we're not, we're not really saying that, that nobody else can come into town, we're not saying that we can't cancel them sometime during that ten-year contract?
Through the chair, you wouldn't be able to cancel it, you have a contract with them, but you would be able to have another contract with another provider at any time during that period, so it's not exclusive, so I think that's the word, that the contract with a provider is not an exclusive contract, you can have multiple contracts, but once you sign a contract, you have to abide by the language in the contract, so if you were to break that contract, I'm sure there's certain language in there that describes the conditions under which you could break that, but don't forget, if you have that contract, it's still providing an option for your residents to go with either the one that you have currently or a new one.
So, to follow, so if we don't have any authority or leverage over the fees, why are we in a contract?
It goes back to when the original Cable Act was signed back in seventy-one, it just, it's set up that towns would have, you know, choose their cable provider, in this case, Charter gives us the franchise fee and an access fee, which pays for all the, you know, the equipment you see there, and the studios for the public, we give a lot of stuff at a high school, so the kids can have all the technology available for them.
Oh, so, so we're, we're strictly talking about town facilities, we're not, that's what we're talking about here?
So the contract.
I thought we were talking about like town facilities, and, you know, like, I, I thought the idea was that we would be able to have, have a contract so that, kind of like the power where you can get, residents would get a little better rate, can we negotiate that at all?
Well, the thing with the, you know, a cable company gets all their programming from all the different vendors that sell it to them, so as those vendors charge more for the programming, Charter has to raise their prices for what they're paying off of them, you know, initially, if you look at your cable bill, there's a new fee in the last couple of years for the local channels, you know, Channel four, five, you know, six, all the ones in Boston, now those used to be free, but they were losing revenue, so they got in, you know, to get their piece of the pie, so now that, that's probably the ability, I think it's six ninety-nine a month or something like that to pay for the Boston channels, but, you know, all those sports stars, movie stars, they're all getting residuals for every show that comes on, so that's constantly going back to all of that.
So, and it might help if I explain, so this is, and we'll go through the process over the next year and a half, explaining to the Board all the different nuances to this, but it's, it's called PEG access, P stands for public, E stands for education, and G stands for government, so there's three components to your cable provider, so they provide channels for the public, they provide channels for education, which are the schools, and they provide channels for government, which are all our local government channels, we, for the, for the legal ability to do that, the towns, municipalities have to sign a contract, as Bill said, under the FCC, we, you have to sign a contract with the provider that outlines how much they will provide to the town for the salaries, as well as for the equipment over the period of the term of the contract, so in prior contracts, we received capital funds that came in through the Charter contract to the town, and those capital funds, as Bill pointed out, go to all of the equipment that you see, you know, any of this equipment we purchased, we purchased it for here, we purchased it for the schools down at the studio, we're using those revenues to pay for the renovations at Camp Gleason, so we can make that space accessible for televising meetings.
And previously, the press box as well at the high, at the high school.
And we also have to put in.
I was going to say the fiber INET that the town has, the town saving on, on phone bills because of the fiber INET, we paid for that completely.
So that, that all came through cable, so what we're in the process of doing now with attorney, Bill August, Chris, Ed, himself, and the local Cable Committee, we're going to be putting together a budget for the next ten years, you have to project out what your salaries are, what your coverage is, who is going to be working for cable television, what the escalation is in, anticipated in those salaries, and then we have to put together a list of equipment, what equipment do we perceive that we're going to need, are we going to need microphones, are we going to need monitors, are we going to need replacement equipment, all of that is part of the negotiation with Charter or anybody else who comes in providing this service, that's what is in the contract, what's in the contract is how much they're going to give us on an annual basis to cover the costs of providing PEG access, P E G access, and that also includes the capital, except my understanding is this time it's all going to be folded and together, and they're not going to be separating out the capital from the operating.
So, so what we're voting on tonight is to basically let the Cable Committee take care of the negotiations or the hearings?
The hearings.
Okay, and.
And, and through that, they would be also obviously involved in the negotiations as well, but ultimately, you're not giving away any of your authority, you are the issuing authority, so at the end, whatever recommendations come out of the hearings and from the committee and from town administration based on things that we hear, and when I say that, the ascertainment hearing may invoke some residents coming in saying, you know, I'm having a hard time hearing the television during certain times, so maybe we have to upgrade the quality of some of the audio equipment, so maybe that kind of comment then gets translated into, okay, this is what we'd like to negotiate with Charter, we want to get better, we want to get more money to pay for more equipment, to provide for better audio to, to those at home, so those are the types of things that you hear at an ascertainment hearing, and then the committee would make the recommendation probably to me, and then I would bring it to you along with Ed and Chris, and we review it with you, and you would make the final decision as to signing that contract, and again, that's, it's now about a year and a half away, but under the law, you have to start this process, I think it's thirty months is your requirement, so thirty months ago, which was last December, the LCC took a vote to notify Charter that we were interested in renewing the contract and start entering into the, not in renewing, I'm sorry, interested in entering into the ascertainment process, and now that process, as Bill said, does take eighteen to thirty months to complete.
We'll generally go through a several drafts, which you'll all receive confirmation to review yourselves in that combination.
And our attorney, Bill August, does a lot of the hands-on negotiations with the provider, just making sure that our insurance is protected in the language in the contract.
Thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Cacken?
Can someone explain to me what the ascertainment process looks like, so we have two public hearings at most, is that what I'm hearing, or can?
Yeah, generally, that's what you need, it's, you know, we review the previous contract to make sure that Charter complied with everything that was written into that one, you know, the public, you know, has their input on it, you know, it's pretty simple the last couple of times, and we generally don't get more than half a dozen people to come in and actually make comments, and more of the formality of going through the details to make sure that everything was taken care of the last time.
And if I recall, we had representatives from Charter as well.
Yeah, so.
Who were here to answer some questions as a courtesy, we invited them to participate in the hearing, so if residents had specific questions that were on the Charter side, the operations side, Charter was more than willing to answer them, we do have direct contacts with Charter, Chris goes right to them, Bill goes right to them, whenever we get a consumer complaint, we have a person that we go right to when they handle the complaint, let us know how they handled it and whether it was resolved, and those are the Charter representatives that came to the last meeting, obviously, they've changed hands since then, but those same contacts are still there, it's just a different corporate structure.
The follow-up, is there any requests for proposals as part of this process, or is this, you know, Charter is it, this is, you know, this is, this is, this is basically a pro forma process that has been written into the law, and we're basically just accepting whatever it is that Charter is.
Essentially, yes, getting the best deal for the town, the way the law was written, so we just follow it and comply, and so try to make the best for the residents here in town.
I would just be more comfortable if there was some sort of public RFP process, so that we could see if there was somebody out there, I don't think.
Well, we've done that in the past, I mean, you know, there was, the last negotiation, there was a company that came in that contemplated actually putting satellite issues in neighborhoods, and just firing smaller neighborhoods, and they were going to use Auburn as a test pen, but it never came to anything, and, you know, we do work.
I'm suggesting that if we treat this as a closed process, it's going to continue to be a closed process, so if we have, what happens if Spectrum goes out of business? Or people stop purchasing your services because the streaming services are offering ninety percent at a much lower rate, so that's my concern is, if we keep treating this as a closed system, then it's not really benefiting the people of the town, and I understand there's hesitancy, as any business person will be hesitant to come in, especially if they feel that there's a strong inside candidate, so, yeah, hey, if the chairman of the Cable Committee is saying, hey, this is basically a slam dunk for these guys, I'm not necessarily going to do that, right, I'm not going to, as a business person, I'm going to say, wow, is that something I want to spend my time in, so, I mean, I tried to learn, I mean, this kind of came out of the blue for me, so, you know, I'm not really comfortable with the process or my understanding of the process, so, you know, for me to vote to delegate anything to anybody, I'm not in favor of doing that tonight, I don't feel comfortable until I understand something, I've had a weekend to look at this, that's not long enough for me to come to a level of comfort to say, yep, the Cable Committee should do this. committee should do this. And then, you know, at the end of the day, we're gonna make you do all the work and then we're gonna then second guess it? I mean, I don't see, I do see delegating it as giving authority away, because if I'm asking you to do it as a volunteer in the community, I'm not gonna sit there and say, you know, six months later, when you give me something, well, geez, you know, that's not what I had in mind. And that kind of, I don't know how many volunteers we get with that kind of, you know, process, per se, but anyways.
There was another case of, uh, a few years back, we had a hearing here that, uh, Charter and Comcast were gonna trade some territories, and we were gonna actually end up with Comcast here. And then that fell apart because the FCC didn't approve the, uh, the deal. So, you know, that would've been a case of, you know, a different provider. It does happen here and there.
If this went to RFP, would, with your expertise and your experience, would any other bidders come in?
In a climate right now, that the expense is, is prohibited for somebody to come in and just wire the town up. And, you know, FiOS is the, the best prospect, but they're just not spending the money.
The economic factor is really dissipated more than anything.
Their, their return on investment isn't there in the smaller towns.
Uh, through the chair, and I just want to be clear, so the whole, and we can get you more information on ascertainment and the whole, but the whole ascertainment process is governed by the FCC, it's a law. So we have to follow the laws for the process. So it's absolutely not a closed process, it's, and I'm sure that isn't what you meant, but it's not a closed process, it's actually the public process that is the open process, whereby people come in and talk about what their needs are in the community. Uh, the, the, if, we can't help people looking and saying it may be a done deal, that the problem is with one provider in the area, it's, it is right now the only, the only game in town. It doesn't mean that it's exclusive, and that's what's stated at every ascertainment hearing and the beginning of every meeting, that's what we state to everyone who reaches out to us, this is not exclusive. The Board of Selectmen has entered into a contract with the only provider we happen to have right now, and if another one comes in, even if it's not, uh, not at the, at the ascertainment, they could commit a year from now, and you could still go through and enter into a contract a year from now.
How far do, how far out do we need to go, um, before we hit another town that has a choice other than Charter?
Uh, Millbury was the last town that FiOS had upgraded into, and that's what they stopped.
So FiOS is in Millbury?
Yeah, Millbury and Sutton.
Okay. So they're, they're close?
They're close, yeah.
They're, they're right, they're right next door. Okay, thank you.
Through the chair, um, and Sharon just pointed out, I apologize, so in this letter that, um, the attorney had drafted, we, the, obviously, the year has to change, it's January of twenty twenty-two, not twenty twenty-one. So, uh, if we do approve of this letter, if the board wants to consider this, we will, um, you can put it on the next agenda, but we'll have to put off the hearing. We don't wanna put it off too long, but we can, um, because we have to have enough time to get everything in place for the hearing with the attorney. So, um, the board's next meeting, um, you, you do have a meeting next Monday, um, to have an ARPA hearing, but you could put this item on the agenda, cause you do have a regular meeting.
Other questions?
I have a couple. Uh, is there any way to have this contract so it's, it's less than the ten years, or they pretty much-
There is, I mean, there's, there's been cases where three years and five years have come into play, which you spend so much time in the process, you know? A three-year contract, the minute it's signed, you're already funding it.
Sorry, yeah, makes sense.
Right, and when you have to start the process thirty months in, prior to the termination of the contract, if you have a three-year contract, you're gonna be starting the process six months into your three-year contract, you're not starting it. So, um, what, as Bill said, you, you could do less at, at one point, I think, um, some communities had a five-year process. But the other problem with that is you're also trying to negotiate the best you can for your capital, for your equipment, and what you know now may not be available to you in, in five years. So you're trying to get the most you can for the longest period of time.
Um, your, your comment that, you know, with satellites, you may not know how long it's relevant, I think is pretty, pretty valid, especially with everything streaming. Um, I don't know how much longer it's been last in general. Um, I did have a question about how these meetings will be advertised, um, are we going to do it, I guess, uh, through social media and-
These meetings will require, um, legal advertisements, um, so social media, website, um, postings, that's all in addition to the legal requirements to actually legally post them, I believe, in a newspaper with a certain type of circulation. So we have to follow the FCC rules on this. And, um, we are happy to bring in attorney, uh, August to answer some of the legal questions that you may have, that maybe I'm, I'm not, I'm not able to answer, but I can tell you on the, um, advertisement that they're advertising requirements. And then we go above and beyond whatever those requirements are.
Um, yeah, let me get in here. Where are we planning to hold the hearings or hearing?
Uh, through the chair, they've always been held in this room. Um, we've never had more people than this room can hold, unfortunately.
And, uh, outside of having the hybrid meeting, uh, is there any way to solicit public input in the form of just emails or any other kind of-
Yes, we, we've done that in the past as well.
Okay.
Reading a bit of memory, we'll take any kind of correspondence to Selectmen's office.
Very good. Um, that's all I have, if there are no other questions, right?
Um, when talking about these negotiations and things of value received, would you say that the, the length of the contract determines what people, what, what-
No, I don't really think it does, cause it's a percentage, so.
Okay.
The percentage will decide every year whether it's five years or ten years.
Okay, and would this contract have any bearing on whether another company would decide to come in and offer to town residents? I mean, this seems like it's just for the government program.
Pretty much, yeah.
And you don't think it would affect another company's decision?
No, they, they're gonna come in and, and, you know, they're gonna buy, buy the same systems that the current company has. So, you know, the town doesn't lose, because if, you know, these guys jump to their ship, you know, we're still getting it from other buyers.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make a comment, um, you know, please don't think that all our questions, uh, for any lack of appreciation for everything that you've done over the three decades, um, it's, it's just, it's, it's getting frustrating that, uh, you know, for, for me, for every other resident, that, that, you know, you're basically trapped with a, with a one, one-horse town. Um, and it, and it's not Auburn's fault, or it's not committee's fault. Um, so please just know that we, you know, I certainly, I, I, I agree with Mr. Carpenter, it's kinda new to us, um, so, you know, we probably should push it off to another meeting and, and maybe some of us individually can, can go out and ask some questions, but that in no way, you know, questions the confidence that we'll have in you to, to, to sign this and, and have you negotiate at some point. But I, I think that, like Mr. Carpenter said, I think we need to be a little bit more knowledgeable in the whole process and, and what's going on as well, so that we can understand, um, what you're going through and, and what you're doing for us. So I, I, by no means don't disrespect you at all, and, and we appreciate everything you've done.
And, you know, on the town website is the current contract, it's, it's accessible to anybody who wants to read it.
Through the chair, if you want, we can also, as I mentioned, we can reach out to attorney August for his availability. I'm sure he'd be happy to either come in person or remotely, um, to answer any questions the board has. He goes, he is the attorney that represents, uh, how many communities, forty, fifty, sixty communities or two, so I'm sure he'd be a great resource for everybody.
I, I mean, I would also like to know, um, I mean, we've gotta have a, a pretty good, uh, relationship with, um, the power company, they own the poles, you know, as to wh- whether, uh, utilities can work together, um, so that a company, yeah, they may have to pull some cable or whatever, but, you know, that, to, to know upfront what the, what the power companies are willing to do to, um, to, to have another cable on their poles, or, or are they maxed out? Or, you know, I'd, I'd like to, i- if we could get some information from the power company as to whether, whether they're really kinda putting the, the squab wash on, on people, you know, coming in and, and doing that, uh, the layout. I, I think, I think there's a lot more to it than, than just, uh, a cable company.
The poles, the poles are on by both National Grid and Horizon, depending on, you know, the poles. And then, and they get revenue from Charter for being on their poles. So, you know, I mean, they're not gonna, if somebody's gonna pay to put their stuff on the poles, they'll take it. I mean, we do have the space, they're just, you know, again, nobody's gonna spend millions of dollars without a guaranteed return on investment, so.
So, so you know for a fact that there is plenty of space on the poles?
Oh, I mean, I, you know, I worked in some towns, you know, east of here that just, just the cables, for the cable TV are about this big around, and, and, you know, they, they couple them and triple them up. You know, our poles are pretty empty all in all.
I, I just think that, and again, I could be one hundred percent wrong on this fact, I think, I'd be ready to move this forward tonight, I think we're conflating the options that residents have for, for internet versus for, for voice tonight. Uh, am I wrong in making that assumption?
No, the, the internet has nothing to do with this contract. We are strictly the cable TV part. Whatever services they sell through their lines, that's their business, we have no say on that.
So, but correct, the whole ascertainment process is to address some of the questions that you're asking, so residents feel to come, come in and ask these questions, and have our attorney respond to the questions, have a local cable committee respond to the questions, have us, uh, listen to what their concerns are, and then try to build in some of those concerns into the next contract. But we can certainly wait, I, I just don't, my only, um, suggestion was if we do wait, um, we will pick another date, cause if we wait until your meeting in December, we wanna have plenty of time to notify people that we're doing this hearing. So I don't wanna, you know, we would lose two weeks of notification, um, so that's, if we did it in mid-December, um, or three weeks, actually. So these dates will probably change, so that's, that's my only comment, is we'll probably move this hearings to, uh, end of January, maybe early February.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Carpenter?
I would just say that having meetings in January is never a good time to hold a public hearing, because with the lack of light, you, you lose a lot of people, and you never know when there's gonna be a storm. Uh, to me, you know, something like this, if we really want people to come out, which whether they do or they don't, I have no way of knowing, my crystal ball is foggy, but to me, you know, March people should really be when we're starting to ask people to come out. That's when the weather gets warmer, it's later, later, people can, can come. And to me, in January, it's just, to me, it's not the optimal time. Um, for myself, I don't understand the process enough to vote to say it's great, it's not great, so that's, we're on that.
Uh, yeah, through the, through the chair, the, uh, attorney August has recommended that we get moving quickly and start this first hearing, this is a long process, and it has to be wrapped up by the time the contract ends in June of twenty twenty-three. So his recommendation was to have the hearing in either December or January. Um, so I, I would say that you're correct on the weather and the concerns, we always have snow dates, whenever we have meetings like this in the winter, we always schedule a snow date, but also keep in mind, this is a hybrid meeting, um, so there is the opportunity to participate from home and not having to come out at all, which we've never had that opportunity before. Um, so we are able to do that for this hearing. Uh, we may not be able to do that after April if the legislation, uh, doesn't get extended past that, but for this, we can certainly have it as a hybrid. So I don't know if that addresses your concern, Mr. Carpenter, on people actually getting here and it being dark, cause they can participate from anywhere for this one. But we can certainly ask, uh, the attorney what type of timeframe he needs. I, I can just tell you, I'm responding to his request to have this hearing set up in December or January to get going on the process.
I guess my, you know, the library trustee interview that we just had, you know, technology is great if you can access it, and you have a lot of people who cannot access it remotely. So yes, it is wonderful that it's an option, but it's not an option for everybody. And again, with darkness being what it is, you are closing out a, a whole series of people who might come, may not come, I don't know. I mean, it's up to the board, I, I don't wanna, you know, belabor the point if people have, you know, their own minds made up.
Well, I, I would also just add again, it's, it's not just for people who have computers, it's people who have telephones. There's a telephone number to call in, there's a computer to call in, and there's the opportunity to supply written testimony, um, either through email or mailing it to our office. So there's probably four or five different ways to get information to us, if, if indeed we can't wait until April. I, I, I don't wanna tell you we can't, cause maybe we can, but my understanding from the attorney is we should not.
He's still missing, but this contract is for the town to have cable access on Charter. Right?
This contract is for Charter to provide, um, PEG services to the town, yes, being public education and government services on the channels that you see, um, for the town. And for the town to be able to provide television services, they have to pay for the staffing to do that. So they pay for the, um, they pay for all the costs of running the cable services division. Did I answer-
I feel like I'm way over on our discussion here. Uh, any other comments, questions? I'd say that, uh, I'm okay with voting on it tonight. I'd also be open to either having, you know, if we could have both of those hearing dates, this January eighteenth and January thirty-first instead of one or the other, I don't know if that would, if they're both dates in January, so I don't know if that helps at all, but, um, it gives people at least another opportunity. I'm just wondering if that helps at all.
I'm only one vote.
Well, uh, through the chair, we would have, if we did it on January eighteenth, uh, we would probably then do the thirty-first as the snow date. If we did the thirty-first, we'd have to pick another date in February as the snow date, uh, that's what we do with our town meetings as well. And then the second hearing, I believe the information has to come back and be processed, and then a few months go by before you have the second hearing. That's why it is a drawn-out process. And again, I, I would defer to the attorney to come in and explain to the board what has to be done in between. Um, and we could still have him come in in December, I mean, if he's available in December or January, to come in and explain everything to the board. Just let me know and help you then set it up.
Um, is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve delegation letter from the issuing authority to the local cable committee delegating the holding of the cable ascertainment hearing to the committee.
A second.
Motion's been made, a second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Alright, if it passes, uh, the chair votes yes. Passes for you too.
Thank you so much, Bill. I'll be in touch. Can you let me know about those two dates with your committee numbers? Can you just let me know about those two dates with the committee numbers? Alright, great, thank you.
Proclaimations and recognitions, we have none, and under town manager general items or town manager items, we have an update on the Public Safety Facilities Advisory Committee. So I'll turn that over to our town manager.
Alright, thank you. Uh, through the chair, um, you are, I notified the board last week about the Public Safety Facilities Advisory Committee, uh, that met last Monday, uh, in this room, and Ed, myself, and as well as, um, police and fire were in attendance at that meeting. And as you know, there were pretty much three, three things that were discussed at that meeting. And this is, I know I'm repeating myself to all of you, but we wanted the public to be able to hear this too. So, uh, we have been asked both by this board and the committee to look at Lomansky Park and see if that was possible, to carve out, you know, a five-acre piece of Lomansky Park and maybe use that for a public safety facility. Then we were also asked to look at the West Street site as being the site of a joint public safety facility, but under that circumstance, you would have to keep two fire stations open. So it would be putting a new joint facility on West Street with the fire headquarters moving from Drury Square to West Street and keeping the Drury Square facility as the secondary station, not the headquarters. Uh, it would also require upgrades at the, at the Drury Square facility, uh, to be in compliance with some of the restrictions and, and other, um, safety issues. And then the third issue, we were asked to explain to the committee what the process for eminent domain is and how long that takes. So we spent several months, um, Ed, myself, and, and some other internal employees talking with, uh, the state about what the process was for Lomansky Park. So just basically to summarize it, Lomansky Park was purchased with a federal land and water conservation fund grant, and that grant requires- And that grant requires that the land be held in what you call in the state here in Massachusetts, it's called Article ninety-seven. That, that, um, and under Article ninety-seven, that land will always have to remain in recreational use based on the grant that enabled the town to purchase it for recreational use. So there are two different processes to take it out of that, um, that category. And one is the state process and one is the federal process. So on the state process, you have to go through a series of steps to remove it from Article ninety-seven. And that includes votes by the Conservation Commission, Recreation Commission, Board of Selectmen, town meeting, two-thirds vote of town meeting, and a two-thirds vote of the Massachusetts Legislature. Prior to doing all of that, you also have to initiate a federal process. And the federal process, um, involves following the federal regulations, which include notification to the National Park Service. And the National Park Service has to review the entire application and make their determination as to whether they would give their approval, which is required for the state to move forward in their process. So one of the first processes that we were told we had to do was the, was the federal process. And that we were also told to expect that that will take a minimum of three years to have that even looked at. It used to be two years and now, um, over the last two years, it's moved up to three years. So that's a minimum of a three-year process. The other, um, piece of this that's important is if we removed five acres, you have to replace those five acres with an equal amount of acreage with an equalized value. So you have to do appraisals and you have to appraise the property that you're, you're replacing it with. And if it's not of equalized value, let's say the Lomansky parcel is worth more than the parcel you're proposing to put the, the fields on, you have to then provide more land until the value is approximately, approximately the same. They're not gonna hold it by the dollar. It has, it's supposed to be equalized value. So initially, we were thinking, uh, before we understood all the, the regulations that were surrounding this, we thought, well, maybe this is a great opportunity to, um, move the fields. Because we were told that really the town could probably just use one field and not two. And maybe we could also tie in some walking trails and identify an area where we could put in some walking trails and decoration areas, passive recreation. And we were told that we can't do that. If you replace fields, you have to replicate fields. If you replace walking trails, you have to replicate walking trails. You can't replicate fields with walking trails. So you are required to build fields. And you're required to do that within three years of eliminating fields under Article ninety-seven. So the processes, while one is state and one is federal, they're really into time. Because the state won't move on certain pieces until the federal process is done. And the federal process can't move until some of the local processes are done, which are required by the state. So it's very, it's a little convoluted, it's complex. So the bottom line is to do something like that, it would, it would be a minimum of a three-year process to even find out if the federal National Park Service would authorize the, um, they call it the change of use and the relocation. And the concern was even at that, there's no guarantee that we are gonna get approvals, um, either from the federal government or by a two-thirds vote in the legislature. It's, Article ninety-seven is very difficult to remove process from. It takes a, a long time and there's just no guarantee that at the end of that period of time, we would, we'd be told that we could do this. So the concern was for the public safety facility was the escalation in price. And do you wanna just mention at all, I know we can't give you the exact amount, but how much those costs are going to escalate over every year? Was it a, a hundred percent escalation?
So we know just because of, of, of COVID, uh, building costs have escalated significantly. So I couldn't put a dollar value on it, but they, I could tell you it, it's gonna be much more than the scope that was originally proposed at about forty-six million, roughly forty million when, when they did a design in a, in a site layout. They did it at the proposed, uh, Lowe's or, or Langway site. So the total project cost was unfortunately forty-six million. In today's economy, that project would be well over fifty million. So certainly the longer we wait, the more the construction costs go up, even if we don't even consider the impacts of, of COVID nineteen. In addition, which, which was really complicating this, you, you really have to get authorization, not only for the land acquisition piece, but for the construction as well. Because you don't wanna go out and buy, potentially buy a parcel of land without knowing that you don't have or do have support for the, the construction piece. So they kind of fit hand in glove. So that's part of the discussion that was before the Public Safety Committee, uh, last week. They understand, you know, the hurdles that, that need to be jumped and cleared, uh, moving this project forward. But I, I think that was part of their concern is the delay aspect and what's that gonna cost ultimately the taxpayers of this community.
So that was the, that was the first thing that the committee discussed was the Lomansky Park piece. And we discussed the West Street piece. And, you know, that the site as it stands now could support a joint public safety facility. But yeah, you still need to retain a, a facility in Drury Square because for fire purposes, you need to have that response time. The police, obviously their location matters a little less than fire because fire, there's specific response times. Police are, are routinely driving through the town. So where they leave from doesn't matter quite as much as with the fire apparatus. So we talked about with the committee, the West Street, and there was much talk that the town could potentially go out, um, for an RFP for additional land on West Street. There are two abutting properties to the land that the town owns at five to seven West Street. And the committee wanted to know why we couldn't just directly negotiate with one of the owners to purchase the land. And under chapter, uh, thirty D, unless it's considered a unique property, meaning it's the only property that meets your needs, you can't do that. There are two properties that are right next to each other on either side of the town. So we would need to make sure that we had a legal determination that it was a unique use to take one of the properties over the other. Given that it probably wouldn't be, you'd have to go out to bid, um, to request that a property owner may want to enter into negotiations with the town to sell. So it's, it's just an extra process to add on to it. If that was done, that would give a little bit more land to the West Street site, which would enable the facility to be situated so that the police station would front and access Southwood Street, where it would still be part of the same building, but picture more of a, more of an L. That would be here and then more behind it would be the fire station fronting on West Street. So that option was discussed at length. The eminent domain option was discussed. It would not be our recommendation to do eminent domain. It's, it's costly. It's costly, that's why a lot of communities don't do it. It's costly, it's time-consuming. And, uh, the, the cost could escalate to something that we really would not have a control over. Because you enter into an arrangement to purchase a property, you can still move forward with the project, but then they have three years from the time you close on the property to file with the courts. And then by the time it goes to the courts, the values could have gone up to who knows what. And if the town is found to have not paid enough, that value could have doubled or tripled by the time that decision's made. So there, there were some financial concerns with the eminent domain process itself. So at the end of the day, uh, the, the committee had a pretty robust discussion about the fact that about a year ago, um, when they last met in, in a hybrid situation, that they had really supported at the time and still wanna support one joint facility. So their preference is still, if at all possible, to have one facility, not two. So they did take a vote to ask us to go out one more time with the RFP that we had issued, I believe this past March or April, with either our mayor, June Devlin, for response, and we didn't get any responses. So they thought that perhaps the market situation may have changed since, um, March, April, and that maybe there might be property owners that are willing to sell a property to the town, in which case they could respond to the RFP. So we're gonna work with, uh, town council to review that one more time. See, the committee had suggested, is there any language in there that we could eliminate to make it easier for people to bid on it? So if there is, we will. Most of the language is in there as a requirement of chapter thirty D procurement laws. But if there's anything in it that we could make it easier, we certainly wanna do that. So we're gonna take another look at that and, um, put it out to bid again. And that would have to go in the central register. We'd have to have another, um, uh, they call it a pre-bid conference where you make yourselves available for a bidder to come and ask any questions about the bid. And maybe this time we'll be lucky and get a property owner who's willing to sign the property. The board didn't really have a definitive answer on what happens if no bids come in. They thought, let's just wait and see and get back together based on the results of it.
Has there been any discussion with Langway as, I mean, why they wanna, uh, um, react to the RFP, but yet they're doing nothing with the land? I mean, it, it.
Well, the, the town's in a.
What's gonna go on with that land? It, it's, it's an eyesore.
Well, the town's in an awkward position in that we're not, when we put out a bid, when you put it on RFP, you really can't have discussions with one potential bidder that you're not having with all the other bidders. So, because the process would be tainted under the law. So when we put it out, we did reach out to the broker for that property as well as to sign it, as well as to, uh, the owner, um, uh, I can't recall the other ones. We, we looked at several brokers in the area and said, maybe you're aware of anyone who's in this radius who's willing. So we can do that. We can't reach out to any of the bidders because we want them to bid and have that kind of conversation and convince them to come in and give us a bid. And that's the frustrating part. And your question is exactly what the committee was saying. Why can't we find out why Langway didn't come forward? Because we can't have a pre-consideration of which bid we're going to take. Um, so we can't.
And my, my follow-up to that is, not for nothing, but, um, have we considered, um, somebody that might wanna fit up a building and give us a thirty-year lease? You know, like an extendable thirty-year lease? Where we don't have to own the land, um, but we, we lease it to a building that gives that business income. And, and they still own the land, they own the building. Because, you know, I see, I see us thirty years from now having the same discussion that we've outgrown the land that, you know, the building that we made. And, um, you know what I'm saying?
No, it's a great, it's a great, I will double check. I believe the RFP was put out for a lease or.
Or, or sell, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it was. There were some concerns about, uh, having a lease with regard to having the town make, you know, scores of millions of dollars investment in a property that you don't own. So that was probably determined to be not the optimal idea, um, situation because you're making that investment in somebody's land and then you're not owning it. So that was a little bit of a concern for town council, um, as far as the town's exposure to invest the type of money. I, I think part of the reason, Ed's just alluded to it, that we're not, we're not getting any responses to this. For a property owner to come out to the town and say, I'm willing to sell my land to you, we have no guarantees right now that we can even buy that land. We haven't had a town meeting vote. We haven't had a ballot question. We don't know if the voters are gonna support this. So everything in the RFP has to be conditional upon the town receiving town meeting approval and of debt exclusion vote. So a property owner may not have been willing to take a risk in the real estate market to sell something to the town where it's taking it off the market. But who knows how long, and it could end up back on the market if we don't get the votes at the election. So. We do, you have to have all the votes in place and events. So that's the only reason, um, this person, we can think that we weren't getting response because of property owner. There's no guarantee that we're actually gonna go forward with the purchase. And we can't go to town meeting, as Ed said, it's a chicken and egg. We can't go to town meeting to get approval for something where we don't know what the dollar amount is or where it is. So we can't go to town meeting and get approval to purchase land from the amount of X or up to the amount of X when there's no land that's been identified yet. So that's the most challenging part of this whole process is trying to deal with the fact that the town doesn't actually own any land that would have been sufficient for a facility. So we're required to go through this whole bidding process to actually purchase land. And that's why the West Street site, you know, became a, you know, it's a doable option. It's just, I understand the committee's concern, they really spent so much time coming up with the fact that one facility would be best and, and it would be, um, we just don't have the land currently in our, at our disposal.
Negotiations.
So we'll keep you informed. Again, frustrating for everybody, um, because I, I, I think the committee's done a phenomenal job. They've been meeting now for two years. A little bit of it got delayed with COVID, but really not a lot, um, cause they did start meeting again remotely. And they had, you know, full contingency here the other night, which is nice. They had everybody here, except one person had, um, logged in. So the committee's still dedicated, they're still committed, they still wanna pursue this project. And we'll keep you informed and hopefully we'll get this RFP out in the next, um, couple of weeks.
Actually, we have a flyer on the upcoming RFP in public hearing, it's gonna be next Monday.
Right, so just to verify, we have, um, we put together the flyer. It is on, um, it's obviously on our social media, it's on our own website. It's at the, on our public folding boards. And it's, it's tonight, uh, we want to get this on here so the public could see it tonight. We also, um, on the suggestion of one of the members of the selectmen sent it, like, you know, to all town meeting members and then put it in the mail, hard copy to those town meeting members that don't have any. So we, we are promoting it. We're still in the process of putting together all the documents that we wanna present. We did set up a new website, um, that I sent you all a link to. And the website has a lot of materials on RFP. I, I foresee it being something similar to COVID, that as things keep coming out, we're gonna have to keep adding to that website. Even last Friday, Treasury came out with a couple of new regulations regarding the RFP funds. They're anticipated to come out with more regulations next week. So the regulations are, are consistently being updated by Treasury. And as we get those regulations, we'll post them on the website to keep the public informed.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, material items, we have none. Select board member items. All right, so some board members will remember, um, I had proposed that we adopt chapter fifty-three, section eighteen. B, eighteen B, um, is what I found in the list, by the way, suppose eighteen B, you wanna add that in. Back in November of twenty eighteen. And at the time, the board was concerned, I think, one with cost and two that there might be a perceived bias from the community if we adopted this. And then had to, um, write out some of the, the ballot questions. I should actually explain what this is to two new members. I'm sorry, I went into this, forgetting that, you know, two members weren't on the board at the time. So what chapter fifty-three, section eighteen B does is allow municipalities to, when there's a ballot question or a ballot initiative, to send out a mailing to all registered voters in town and see what a yes vote will do, what a no vote will do. And also it offers opinions in, for a yes vote and for a no vote. So Shrewsbury has adopted a similar piece of this legislation. They actually, I think they went through special legislation, if I'm remembering correctly. So there's a little bit different, but they have a very similar, uh, bill in place now. So whenever there's a ballot question that's put on in Shrewsbury, the residents there, anyone who's a registered voter, gets a mailing from the town that tells them exactly what a yes vote will do and what a no vote will do. I think this is a really great way to remind everyone that there's an election when we do have a ballot question and to tell them what a ballot, the ballot question is going to be and what their votes are going to do. I know when we had the ballot question regarding marijuana dispensaries, people in town might have meant to vote one way and voting the other way, there was a lot of confusion around that. Yeah, especially because in November, they had voted a, uh, yes vote to legalize recreational marijuana. And then all of a sudden, a yes vote in our, our May election was to ban it. So I think a lot of people were confused on that. Additionally, I think a lot more people would have turned up to vote on it. They had known it was out. I think it's one way to advertise the election. So the reason I put this on for discussion only is I wanted to put it before you guys, uh, give you a chance to look it over. Uh, I did find the actual mass general laws. I'll send that to the town manager and ask her to send it to all of you, um, so you can look it over. And, uh, if you really didn't talk about it, I guess, share your opinions and concerns. And at some point, I am going to come back and ask for a vote on it again. I don't know if anyone has any initial impressions. I know the two of you were on the board when I first proposed this, uh, a few years ago. So I don't know if you have anything to add with that or if the other two new members have any. So I don't know if you have anything to add with that, or if the other two new members have any initial thoughts that they want to add, but.
Different question, what was the opposition?
So I, I think a couple of the things were, number one, the cost to, to send out to every registered voter. The other was that, you know, we, we do have to be careful. It was like, you know, once we put that letter together, it had to, was going to have to go to town council to make sure that, you know, that the i's were dotted, the t's were crossed. Yeah, and that we weren't advocating one way or another. You know, and it kind of can come into interpretation and, you know, I'm, I'm still reluctant to, to do something like that. I mean, we people that want to vote are going to come out and vote. I, I think, you know, we have enough signs around town and, and things like that that, that let people know when, when an election is. I mean, people should know when their election is. I'd be more inclined to, you know, maybe put together like some sort of a, a video that could we, we, we're lucky that we have one voting space, the, the high school. You know, maybe instead of a, a letter, we, you, you put together a video so that when somebody walks in to vote, if, if they have a question, they can go watch, you know, step aside down the hall or whatever and, and watch a video on where they're going to this is just a, a running video that says, this is if you vote yes, this is if you vote no. Again, it would have to get cleared by the attorney. But I just, I, I don't think we need to have the expense. We can find out what the expense is going to be at this point too. So I'm not totally against it, but I'm, I'm still reluctant to, to the whole thing. So, you know, certainly I think we can, we can have a discussion about it and give the, the two new board members a chance to, to think about it a little bit and put it on an agenda at a different meeting. But I think that was kind of the, the pushback on it was, was cost and, and liability and everything from the whole thing.
Very valid for sure. I certainly want to go down the road and see what the costs are. As far as the liability standpoint, I can certainly see it. But I think it was factual. Here's what it is, a yes, a no, here's what it'll do, we keep it listed. You can walk that line, I think. But I, I'm open to have the conversation.
So we'll say that in 2018, I think when the town manager came to us, it's about $5,000 for mailing. So just to give you a rough idea, because I'm sure that's changed since then, but yeah, that was around the budget.
I think that sounds about right. And I'm happy to send the board the memo that I had written to the board at the time explaining the law and what some of the requirements are within the law. Because I think that generated some of the conversation. And I think with regard to Shrewsbury, I'll have to go back and look, but I believe they had a home rule petition that allowed them to handle it outside of the process of chapter 53, section 18. So some of the things that they had done before this chapter even existed, as it's now written, was done through their home rule petition. So we can't look at their process unless we had a long home rule petition. But under this particular chapter, there are certain requirements. And I think, if I recall, one of the issues was, I have to look at it again, I apologize. But I think one of the issues was that both sides had to be given the opportunity to put something together. And the process for getting each side to do that was complicated. And if you couldn't find the 10 people who needed to put together the, the, something on one side, you had to have your town council write both positions. And that was a concern that town council had at the time, that he's actually going to have to write both positions.
Right.
Is that sound right?
Yeah, yeah, that was right. So it was a what a yes vote would do, what a no vote would do. And then also you're writing the opinion pieces as a separate part of it, that they'd be limited to. I don't remember the word count, but it was so long for a yes and so long for a no.
But I'll send it out, I'll, I'll pull up that memo and send it to everybody.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, I have the meetings too, where the dates written down somewhere.
I think it was October 2018, September. It was, it was right around election day.
Yeah, it was right after we had done classification hearing, I remember that. So it might have been the same night, sorry to pull those up. But yeah, those were the concerns at the time. Again, I think this will be a really good thing, even just to remind people to vote. I don't think everyone in town knows what an election is. Turnout fell another 3% since that election. Because I think at the time in 2018, we were at 9%, maybe just under 10. In our last election, we were at 6.7%, I think. It's, it's rough to get people to turn out. And I think part of it is, is they don't know when the election is. When we had automatic mailers go out, we saw a boost in, in turnout during the special election in September. So I think it was one of the highest turnout we've had in years. And that's just, the mailing went out to everyone, so everyone knew that there was an election. So I think there is a lot of validity to this. And again, this is only when there's a ballot question, so it's not going to be every year. I wish it was frankly, but the expense wouldn't be every year. It's only when we put a question on the ballot. And unfortunately, the reminder would also only be whenever it's on the ballot. But again, if there's, that's, I just wanted to bring it before you right now and then we'll send out the petition and get the memo and talk about it in the next coming meetings. All right, if there's nothing else, any motions?
Yes.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, your turn.